Good evening, welcome to the March 24th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please stand to salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call the members.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino. Here, Councilor Grino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Hermio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna. Here, Councilor Novoselsky. Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 10th.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number three, public hearings. Hearing called as ordered on, an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to open meeting rules.
Do we have any proponents? Any proponents? Any opponents? Opponents? Hearing none? Any city councilors? Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I've argued my case for this. I'm just hoping if anyone has any further questions, happy to answer them. I think that this is a good idea and we can move through the budget process smoothly and in a time that makes more sense for the department heads. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Councilor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree, although obviously I'm retired, so it doesn't really make a... Doesn't matter to me, just hopefully all the councils can get here. I think it's a great way with all the department heads, make it more convenient for them and their staff to come. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Hearing none? Okay, this will go to Legislative Affairs.
Council, it was originally, it was never ordered to a public hearing at the first introduction. It was sent to committee where you ultimately decided to order to a public hearing. This is the public hearing, can't vote in an ordinance the same night it's introduced, so it needs to go back to committee.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number four, hearing called as ordered on application of Trichillo Development, 13 Victoria Street, Revere, Mass. Requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to raise the existing non-conforming structure and construct a five-story mixed-use development consisting of 52 residential units and two commercial units at 114 Shirley Avenue.
Petitioner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Honorable members of the council, Joseph Cotojo, One Sprague Street, Revere, representing the petitioner. Trichillo Development LLC, who is petitioning for the application to have approved a... Actually, it's a 50 unit. I know that the original application said 52, but after site plan, some revisions, it has been downgraded to a 50 unit, building 48 residential units to commercial first-floor units at 114 Shirley Avenue in Revere. The petitioner has submitted through, initially through site plan review. There were some recommendations made at that point that we've incorporated into a revised plan that was submitted. It's my understanding our builder has submitted those plans to you. Each of you have a set. It is in, would be in compliance with all recommendations by the site plan review, by the planning board, and the, all the various departments. We understand that this will be submitted to the zoning subcommittee. We look forward to that hearing and to present our application in full and to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else? Any proponents? Any proponents? Anyone in favor?
Good evening. Brian Harkins, 72 Dehaun Street in Revere. I am, sit on the board with Joanne for the Revere Public Arts Commission. I have started the Revere Art Community and I am the Mass TDI Adjunct Fellow for the Arts for Revere. I have worked with Ira and other people down in the Shirley Ave. district and we have met with the developers and their team and how they're integrating into the community rather than it being a place to just rent units. They want to work with it. It will help us fulfill our mission of getting Shirley Ave. to be recognized as an art district and then reach the ultimate goal of the City of Revere gaining an arts and cultural designation because of the work they're going to do and work with us to be able to have an arts community and cultural center down in Shirley Ave. So of the 250-plus members, we've talked about 60% of them, they are in favor of this project going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Any other proponents? Anyone else in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone against? Opponents? Closing that side. City councilors? Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, um... Shut your mics off, please. Thank you. This is a similar project to what we've had down Shirley Ave. Five floors, four residential and one floor of retail, two retail spaces. No parking and there will be, residents will not get parking permits as we have done in the past. And we did have a neighborhood meeting, community meeting, and we had four or five residents show up. Nobody was super against it, you know, one person would say blocking their light, but that's about all they got, you know, from negative. But, you know, let's see what happens when we go to zoning and open it up a little more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Hermio.
Actually, I'll reserve my comments for, my questions for the subcommittee on zoning.
Okay. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was happy to see the only, that there are only, I think, eight or nine parking spaces. I was looking at the diagrams beforehand and it looks like maybe those will be just for the office, the staff, or the workers inside. One thing I was a little concerned about is that there was a little, not a little, there was a lack of any affordable units or maybe senior units. I know Brian spoke about the arts and I kind of feel like this is kind of geared to that. You know, there are one bedrooms and two bedrooms. I would really love to see something affordable for the seniors in there, maybe even if it's a couple of units. Just to, just to see if we can get that going. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other city councilors? Okay. This will be referred to zoning.
Calendar item number five, hearing called as ordered on application of Master Spray Foam Insulation, 870 Broadway, requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to change a non-conforming use, a commercial garage, to another non-conforming use, a contractor's storage yard at 870 Broadway.
Petitioner?
Again, members of the city council, Joseph Cotojo, One Sprague Street, Revere, representing the petitioner, seeking a change of use, which we believe is a lesser use than the existing use on the property. It is identified as a contractor's yard. Specifically what the petitioner is looking for is a place to have his vehicles stored that service his spray foam business. These are specifically three vans, three box trucks that will all be stored overnight onsite. There will be no off-street or side-street parking involved. We would certainly accept that as a condition of the special permit. There are no, as indicated, there are no renovations proposed to the building, no expansion or additions to the existing building that will remain as-is. There will be no business conducted onsite other than the morning supplies of the trucks and the evening unloading of the trucks. No clients will be visiting the site or conducting business. There will be no other vehicles, no construction vehicles, backhoes, or tractors or anything of that nature, stored onsite and no materials other than those that are already there for the spray foam business. We again would obviously accept the transfer to the subcommittee and would be willing to make a further presentation there and answer any and all of your questions at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Any proponents? Hearing none. Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone against? Opponents? Ma'am, your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
My name is Jo Gupta and I live at 6 Fisk Street. I live across from Master Spray Foam. So I have a couple of pictures that I'd like to, can I pass these around? Is that okay?
Please, if you could give them to the clerk. Thank you.
So there's the pictures and descriptions of what I'm going to be talking about. And so I have the application in front of me that was submitted. And I want to talk about, first, that it's been used as a contractor's storage yard for seven years. And I'm kind of wondering how that's been allowed because if it was supposed to be used as a gas and a service station and it's been used as a contractor's storage yard for seven years, including all their supplies and their generators, it's a little confusing as to why we're asking for a license to do whatever they've already been doing for the last seven years. So that's one question I have. Now, the second question I have is section four on their request of finding a fact for the special permit. It says that this does not adversely affect the neighborhood. And I would argue that every morning at 5 o'clock or 5:45 a.m., I wake up to the sounds of these guys loading their trucks. And it's gotten to the point where I do call and I do ask for a noise abatement from the city. And sometimes they come out, sometimes they don't. But at 5:45 a.m., two cars pull in every morning from Monday through Saturday. And they come in with their cars booming. So they're young kids, they're, you know, they got trucks that come in, cars are booming. They start slamming around metal containers into the back of box trucks. And they do that until about 6:30 a.m. and then they drive off. And they come in, come back around 7:00 p.m. every day. So when my neighbor Matt contacted the, I think it was you, they said that the hours of operation were 6:30 to some time in the evening and that's not true. It's 5:45 a.m. all the way to the evening. And that is six days a week. Let's see. So there is an issue with the vehicles. So when they get their shipment of supplies, it comes in an 18-wheeler. That 18-wheeler effectively blocks Fisk Street, so we cannot exit Fisk Street off the Broadway, onto Broadway. I've contacted Revere PD about this. It doesn't seem to be a problem that gets resolved. I want to draw your attention to the pictures. So on one page of the pictures, you'll see that the building is in disrepair. So I'm wondering about how is this building getting permitted every year? So on the outside of the building, it is covered with stucco and the stucco was done improperly. And I know this because I overheard the conversation about how it was being done improperly. And I feel bad for the business owner because they did try to fix something that was not correct. And they, I think they kind of got a little bit hosed by the people who did the stucco. The stucco has been falling off over the years and what it reveals underneath is that the building is rotting. It is, the wood is rotting, the bricks are crumbling. On top of the building, the building's roof is not level. So it's got one level here and then another level here. And there's a ladder that is propped up on top of the roof so that they can drag a generator up, or sorry, a sump up onto the roof every time it rains, so that they can push all the water that's collecting on the roof onto the ground. So again, I don't understand how you could have a ladder placed on top of a roof for seven years. I don't get it. I don't think that's right. There's two exhaust pipes that come out of the building. One of them, it looks fairly good. It's like silver, it looks kind of metallic. The other one is pure black. And the reason it's pure black is because twice a day, there is black smoke pouring out of that exhaust pipe. I don't know what it is and I don't really feel particularly safe around it. So I, I would like that question answered. What is pouring, what is causing black soot to pour out of that pipe? If you also look on the other pictures that I provided, you can see that the lot is currently being used to store vehicles that are coming in. And I assume they're coming in because they've been bought at auction. They don't have license plates. They do have little stickers on them that say, that have some kind of QR code, so it almost seems as if they were purchased. Those vehicles are dumped onto the lot between 12 a.m. and 5 a.m. So a tow truck backs down the street with its lights flashing, with the noises going. They slam, they do all these kinds of things, chains rattling. They dump the cars and those cars stay there forever. So what I would like to say is that the permit should not be approved until all the cars are gone. I don't know why we would approve it if it's not going to be a conform use. So I think those are my issues. And I just want to say that the pictures of the cars are the cars that are trucked in. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other opponents? Anyone else opposed? Anyone else against? Closing that side. City councilors? Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to address some of the things, ma'am, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Joe? Joe, nice to meet you. So I just want to read what the conditions of the special permit are. But we are going to make sure that the building is sound and I'm curious as well what that soot is. So just so you know, it says here, no renovations will be required or requested on the existing building. The spray foam storage onsite will remain. These are the ones I sent to Noel, by the way. And the site will no longer be used for repairs of any kind. The exterior will be used for overnight parking of six vehicles only. They're only going to be allowed to have those six vehicles. All owned by the petitioner and used for his spray foam business. There's going to be three vans and three box trucks. No heavy equipment or construction supplies or materials will be stored, only the spray from foam containers. No business will be conducted onsite, so there won't be any customers coming on and off the property. The hours of operation for this permit, I don't know what they are now, ma'am, but for this one, it's stated 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. If you're unhappy with that, let us know. Can work on maybe changing that. Generally, only in the morning and end of day will there be any activity there. And there will be no sales conducted onsite. And further, most recently, the petitioner has agreed to also put as a condition on the special permit, they will not be allowed to park their work vehicles on the side streets. And I did also write down something about the deliveries going down Fisk. Fisk is small enough, we don't need 18-wheelers going down that street. So if we could work on something along those lines to make sure that we don't have deliveries inundating the neighborhood. But I do want to get the soot taken care of. And ma'am, if there's anything I missed, please, if it's okay with you, through you, Mr. President.
Yes.
And ma'am, if there's anything I missed, let me know.
Well, the 18-wheelers don't go down Fisk Street. They say on Broadway, but they block Broadway. So they don't fit in the spot.
That's unacceptable.
That they have.
That's unacceptable.
So that's one issue. And then I do want to state that again, those cars do need to be removed before they get the license. That would be my request.
They'll only be allowed to have those six, the three box trucks and the three vans.
Okay.
Onsite. That's it. So you let me know if, if this gets approved down the line, that you let me know if there's any other vehicles there because they're not allowed to have it.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Any other city councilors? Councilor Zambudo.
Check. Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, I know this is going to my committee, but I've had several calls on this and I, I got to be honest that with the, speaking to the petitioner before the meeting, I, I think that the people that called me are going to be happy with what, what's proposed. Number one is the no on-street parking of any kind. Number two, it is truly a lesser use and it's not going to be a mechanic shop anymore. And those little, those cars will not be there anymore because they can't be there. If it's just for the spray foam business, is the six vehicles going to be allowed there? That cleans up the, any cars, because if there's any cars there, then they're in violation of the special permit. I think we can work something out about the 18-wheeler blocking the street. That's unacceptable and we'll, we'll make that some kind of condition on the special permit. And obviously, it's going to need a complete inspection by inspectional services, by the building inspector. I'd like to hear from a structural engineer. Looking at these pictures, it looks like this building's crumbling. So when it says no remodeling, I think there's going to have to be some repairs to the building to bring it up to code and find out what the smoke is. It may just be a chimney and I don't know, maybe the oil burn is not firing properly and it's blowing black smoke out, whatever. But I think it, it sounds like we can solve most of these problems. I'm, I'm going through all this because the people that called me, I want them to hear that we care about what their, their concerns were. And this definitely sounds to me like a lesser use and will better the neighborhood when it's completed. So I'm looking forward to the zoning committee whenever it's scheduled. Clerk will tell us that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought the noise ordinance was 7 o'clock. It started at 7 o'clock, not 6:30. Did they change it?
They changed.
Oh, they changed it to 6:30? No, 7 o'clock. Okay. So if they're doing anything at 5:45, then you should just call the police. The next day, call your counselor and he'll take care of it, believe me. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. I know this is going to zoning, but since we have the attorney Cotojo here, I don't know if the petitioner was next to you, but do we have any explanation of what that black smoke is that's coming out of there? Because that's kind of a big concern of mine. And also if the building is, you know, in disrepair and needs to be...
We're not aware of any concern, I don't want to say concerns, we're not aware of any issues with the building at all. That whatever inspections have been done or were done, nothing, there's no violations there. There's no health code issues that I'm aware of, that we've been made aware of, which is why I presented that there were no renovations. I wasn't indicating that to be restrictive. I was saying that we weren't expanding, we weren't doing anything to the building that would, that would require a review. It's not like we were refusing, it just, that it wasn't needed for, for what we were proposing. What we're proposing simply is a change of use that was really limited to the yard itself, to the, to the area in front. The soot, he tells me, is just from a furnace. It's from, and I'm not even sure the extent of it, again, it hasn't been raised or even addressed or presented to the owner in any way by anybody, including the health department. So we're not aware of, and the extent of any concern.
No, I appreciate that, Councilor. Thank you. I, you know, I don't, the resident did take the time to come here and, you know, I'm sure they're not making it up, no offense.
No, no, we're not, again...
I know, but are you, so it sounds like you're fine with, you know, doing some checks on the building and having it seen, to see if it's sound and if there's any issues with the building?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what, what's being asked other than have maybe the health department come and take a look or the, the... I think that would probably be the, the easiest, most direct manner. We would certainly welcome that.
Excellent.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Councilor Hermio.
Sorry, Mr. President. Through you to the applicant. What does Master Spray Foam Insulation do?
It's just that. It's spray foam that hardens and I saw a sample of it. It's just residential and commercial insulation that's installed in new buildings, new constructions or renovations. Offsite, you know, it's, but there are barrels that of the materials that come in, that have, that's the supply that comes in and then that's what's stored onto the trucks and taken out for various job sites.
So I know you just mentioned that potentially you'd be willing to have public health inspection, is that right?
If that's a condition, the Board of Health being there, again, there's no residents there, the building department.
Would it be, maybe in our Climate and Sustainability Committee, if you come and present to us the findings of that? We don't have to move this particular permit to that committee, but maybe we can schedule some time for you to give us the findings on that information?
Again, I'm not refusing this at all. I'm just not certain what the, the purpose would be. There's no one living in the building, obviously. The building itself has no violations that are listed. I don't know, I mean, it's standing, it's not crumbling.
Sure. It just sounds like the resident has some environmental concerns relative to the site. We'd love to hear back if you hear from the public, from the building inspector or anything like that. We'd love to hear back what, you know, if, if there's no issues, great. But if there are, we'd love to be, be able to hear that in a public forum. But yeah, those are my two cents, I guess on that.
Thank you, Councilor.
We, we would accept inspections by either the Board of Health or the Building Department, whichever we're directed to and have them present it back. We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the applicant. Do you know when the last time the building was inspected or what type of inspections generally occur at this facility?
It's, it's not anything that's ever been, not ever been, but never been like a regular... I'm sure there've been insurance inspections that have been done, although I don't have the specific informations on that. Whatever requirements the, the city has for prior permitting, they would, that would have been conducted at that point. But again, the, you know, a piece of stucco falling from the side, not that it's not an issue, but it's not something that would require a full inspection or approval or compliance of any kind, what's being complied with.
I understand.
And nothing was done in preparation for this because again, this was an application dealing with the site, the onsite and listening to use, yeah.
But now some issues have been raised, so that's why we're asking. The other thing, you said that the materials are stored in containers and those containers are delivered onto the trucks. Are those the trucks that the resident was referring to at, you know, 5:45 a.m.? Is that, is that the delivery?
If I, again, I don't want to speak for her. I, I think she was talking about the workers that are coming there with whatever radios they're, they're playing at, at that time. The trucks that are being stored, yes, the, the ones that are going out to the site are the ones that are being, that would be install, are loaded with the, the containers. It actually would lessen, this permit would, I would believe lessen any kind of noise because the trucks will already be there overnight. So whatever can be done in preparation for the next day can be done in advance and it would actually lessen the, the activity that's done in the morning. So we would hope that that would address that.
So, Mr. President, I won't belabor this anymore now because I know it's going to subcommittee, but maybe we could think about some of those conditions in regards to the timeframe on the hours of operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. It would probably make sense to send fire prevention there. There's, there's chemicals, they would do a complete inspection. They could maybe even look at the furnace. So fire prevention would probably be the, the smart way to go. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cogliandro.
Sorry, Mr. President. Thank you again for the leeway. I'm just looking up the property. Did you guys have a new fire system, a fire panel installed a couple of years ago? And then you had 2019, you installed a new gas service, is that correct? And then occupancy, okay. So, yeah, I, listen, at the end of the day, I, I think we can all agree this is a better use for this property. We just want to make sure any of the concerns in the neighborhood are met and, you know, dealt with and that's pretty much it. So I don't want to hold this up anymore. I know it's going to zoning, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And permission to speak from the chair. Thank you. Councilor, I know this is going to zoning, just real quick, if you could ask the petitioner to just please ask the crew to lower the radios.
We would certainly do that. And I actually have a question to the council. These inspections you're looking for, are they going to come from the subcommittee or do you want them done before we go to subcommittee? I, I just didn't want to let it lapse.
I think, through you, Mr. President, if I may, I think the best, for, for time purposes, so we can move this forward, would be to try to do them while we're on the way to the zoning subcommittee, so we can discuss them there. You know, that, that would be the best case for me, just for timing purposes.
Thank you, Councilor. And again, just if you could please have the, the crew, and, and it's understandable that they, they probably have to be on a job at a certain time. So if they come in in the morning, they're quiet, they get in and out, it's much appreciated. Thank you.
We will. Thank you.
Sorry, yeah, so I guess to your point... Mr. President, sorry, yeah, so I guess to your point, to answer your question, if these inspections, we have this information for other zoning subcommittee, that actually would be really helpful, I think. So I don't know when that's gonna get scheduled, but maybe work with the clerk once we get that information. That way we can fully...
We'll make the request right away.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you so much.
This will be referred to zoning.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called as ordered on the application of Washington Sherman LLC, Nine South Street, Chestnut Hill, Mass. Requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council for underground storage of 660 gallons of gasoline to be contained within 33 vehicles to be parked in a parking garage of a residential development at 810 Washington Ave.
Petitioner? Is anyone here? No one? Okay. Any proponents? Anyone in favor? In favor?
Barney Cowan Barrett Street. My question was how many parking spots? Did they get 36 by a variance? Because that seems like a lot of gas for 36 vehicles. It's 33? I know they applied for 36, that's why I asked. That seems like an awful lot of gas.
Yeah.
If you figure it out. Are there gonna be parking trucks?
Twenty gallons per tank.
Okay.
Yeah.
For 33?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone against? Closing that side. City councilors? Hearing none? Okay. Say again? Yeah. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council grant a Chapter 148 license for the stated purpose at 810 Washington Avenue? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hesse?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The Chapter 148 license has been granted. Calendar item number seven. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to relocate a single, a sole-owned pole near pole number 520, near 791 Broadway, Revere, approximately eight feet southwest, and also install one sole-owned pole, 521-1, approximately 50 feet northeast of existing pole 520.
Thank you. Mayman, address for the record, please.
Petraiceke, 117 Metford Street in Malden. So National Grid is petitioning to relocate pole 520 near 791 Broadway, Revere, approximately eight feet southwest of the building, and also to install one single-owned pole labeled 521-1, about 50 feet northeast of existing pole, of the existing pole 520.
Thank you. Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone against? Closing that side. City councilors? Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, thank you for being here. Tried to go easy on you tonight. I just want to say publicly, thank you for the calls early on. I appreciate the communication very much. I think I can speak for some of my other fellow counselors. I just want to make sure that this is to provide power to the new development that's happening over there.
This is for that, and it's also because there are some clearance issues as well, which is why we need it to.
And this is gonna happen concurrently with the construction that's happening?
I believe so. This is, this just recently came to me, so I would hopefully...
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Swaya?
This development needs the pole moved in order to continue its work. They can't install the windows without the pole being moved.
Thank you.
So sooner it gets done, the better.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number eight. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install one jointly-owned pole and relocate one jointly-owned pole on Graves Road, beginning at a point approximately 15 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Graves Road and Malden Street and continuing approximately 1,124 feet in a northeast direction. National Grid is also to install pole P 3335-50, approximately 66 feet south from existing pole 3335 on east side of Graves Road, and relocate pole 4466, approximately 20 feet north from existing location on east side of Graves Road. Changes are for reliability and feeder relief.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any petitioner?
Yes, so Graves Road, we're doing some changes for reliability and feeder relief. It's becoming a three-phase, which is why National Grid is petitioning to relocate pole 4466 approximately 20 feet north from the existing location, and also to install pole 3335-50 approximately 66 south from the existing pole.
Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Hearing none? Any city councilors? Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. This looks pretty straightforward, just do you have any idea when the work's gonna start and how long it's gonna take?
So according to what I read from the comments, the project was supposed to start somewhere around June, which is why they were kind of trying to get it as, the petition as soon as possible. So summer 2025, that's where like this project is supposed to happen.
And as far as inconvenience in the neighborhood, are we gonna be shutting a road down for this?
I am not aware of this. Maybe my other designer.
Oh, he's pulling you in, buddy, get ready.
That has been broken into.
Calling in the closer. My name's James Kansler, I'm here on behalf of the National Grid at 1101 Turnpike Street, North Andover. And so the road won't be shut down, but there will be some flagging for police protection to, so that the construction crews will have a bucket truck to go and install the poles and reinstall the wires at the top of the new pole. So there'll be some police people to flagging to prevent any accidents for the local traffic to go around. So the road will still be drivable.
And how many people are on that pole? How many different companies do you know off the top of your head?
So it's just the National Grid. There are some communication wires on the poles, but those are handled by the communication companies.
So that's my question, is do we know how long that's gonna take to coordinate with all the different companies to move their wires? Or are you guys gonna do all the work? And if so, how long's it gonna take? That's all I want to know.
Yeah, so we're gonna do the electrical wires, the communication cables, that'll be handled by the communication company, and I don't know how long that will take.
Let's try next time to know that, just so we know how long we're gonna be inconveniencing the neighborhood. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city councilors?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number nine. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install underground facilities on Revere Street. National Grid is petitioning to install two four-inch conduits, starting at pole 2677 and continuing through the sidewalk into 8 Revere Street, to serve as the permanent electrical feed.
Petitioner?
So National Grid is petitioning to install two four-inch conduits, starting at pole 2677, continuing through the sidewalk into 8 Revere Street, to serve as the permanent electric feed for them.
Thank you. Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Any proponents? Hearing none? We'll close that side. Opponents? Anyone against? Hearing none? Any city councilors? Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe this is just to provide service to the new project, there's nine townhouses going over there, so you're going underground from the sidewalk into the property. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city councilors? Okay. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 10. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to relocate one jointly-owned pole on Rosetti Street, beginning at a point approximately 14 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Rosetti Street and Broadway, and continuing approximately 490 feet in a west direction. National Grid is to relocate pole 4811, approximately 10 feet east from existing location.
Petitioner?
So, yeah, National Grid is petitioning to relocate pole 4811, about 10 feet east from the existing location. Also, I wanted to make point that this, the Rosetti Street as well as Graves Road are part of the same project, so they are kind of like, go hand in hand with one another.
Thank you. Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Proponents? Hearing none? Opponents? Anyone opposed? Closing that side. City councilors? Counselor Cogliandro.
I'm in favor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Zambudo?
I just want to say, Mr. President, that I'm very impressed that we're being so kind to the young gentleman tonight. And it's so much better when it goes this way.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm sure he is too. Counselor McKenna?
Counselor Zambudo, the reason why we're so kind to this guy, young man, is because he called every ward counselor today that had an agenda or an item on the agenda, and he talked.
Sure he did. No, I should, I had nothing to do with it.
Oh, you had nothing to do with it, but it was relieving. It was great, you know, for us, because we got information before it was thrown at us. So that's why he's not getting beat up tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Love it when a plan comes together. Okay. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install one jointly-owned pole on the sidewalk to serve as the permanent electrical service for a new building at 8 Avon Street.
Petitioner?
National Grid is petitioning to install a pole on the sidewalk in front of the new building that's gonna go up 8 Avon Street in Revere. It's gonna be used to serve as the permanent, as the permanent electric service for that building.
Thank you very much. Any proponents? Anyone in favor? No proponents? Closing that side. Opponents? Anyone against? No opponents? Closing that side. City councilors? Counselor Garino Swaya?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Any other city councilors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Thank you very much.
Rule 34, public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up. You have two minutes. Please state your name, address, and you must be a citizen from Revere and what motion you'll be speaking on. Thank you.
Anthony Pozziale, 51 Arcadia Street. I'd like to comment on the motion regarding having the ZBA be elected officials. Council President, councilors, I'm in favor of this. Anything that will give the people more say in what happens in their neighborhood, I am for. I cannot see any reason why we wouldn't allow the people to decide what their neighborhoods look like. The way it works now, the ZBA is appointed by the mayor, then it is certified or it is agreed upon by the council whether or not the person gets in. You guys can say yes, you guys can say no. But ultimately, the people don't have any choice. My example is this. I know somebody that wanted to be on the ZBA. Nobody knew this person wanted to be on the ZBA. Might be qualified, but none of us know because it's, the mayor gets to pick from all the applicants, gets to look at it and say, nah, I don't want any of these people. He can decide whoever he wants to be here. And then they come here and, this is gonna sound disrespectful, and it is said, "And so ordered." Just like that, boom, they're on the ZBA, and these people decide what our neighborhoods look like. They can decide whether or not someone's going to build 32 units next to my home, and I have no say, I have no vote. And you would say that I could come to the meeting, and at that, at the meeting of the appointment, I could judge and say, oh, you know, I don't want that person up here. But I'm only judging that one person, I'm only trying to get that one person out of there. I don't have a say in the nomination of the other people that are gonna be on that board. I don't think it's fair that one group of people, unelected people, get that much power to reshape our city without the people's say. So I would ask at least one thing. If you disagree with me, if you disagree with me, please do not put this on file, let it go to Legislative Affairs for more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pozziale. Anyone else for Rule 34 comments? Okay. Closing that. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number 12. This is unfinished business. Petition submitted by National Grid to install a pole across from 55 Walnut Ave, beginning at a point approximately 130 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Shirley Ave and Walnut Ave, and continuing approximately 17 feet in an east direction.
Petitioner?
Yes, so National Grid was petitioning to install a new secondary pole, which would be labeled pole 679-84, to relocate a previously existing antenna, which was located at pole 679 on Walnut Ave.
Thank you. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I hate to be the bad guy on this one. But I, you know, I spoke to the gentleman twice in the last two weeks, and he had told me that the ground was marked on the, where the exact location of the pole that was gonna go. And I went down to check it the same day, and there were no markings on the ground. And he called me this afternoon, unfortunately, late in the afternoon, and, but I did go down and check it again to see if the markings were there, and they weren't. So we still have no exact location of where it was going, other than the picture that he showed me of the proposed location. And I stated to him that, well, where they want to put it, it's within 10 feet of a gas line, and within four feet of a driveway, and there's a triple driveway there because it's for the Revere Housing Authority. It's right basically in front of, basically in front of 50 Walnut Ave, you know, right by their garage. And there are also their parking lot outside. And on the other side of the, other driveway is a water line. So I feel very uncomfortable of the location they want to put it, just for the sake of a private contract and not even for their particular use. And there's a communication company that sent an email around today, saying that, you know, it was related to 911. Listen, if it was related to 911, there would have been problems a couple of months ago been problems a couple months ago when they took the antenna down to put up the new pole for the new building across the street. I'm absolutely against this. I don't want it there. My people don't want it there. It's abusing the pedestrians, and it is not aesthetic for the neighborhood. And I don't think it's the right place to put it. Let them find another pole, or two poles to put, other than the transformer pole that they replaced. So, that's my recommendation. They did ask me if we could table it today. I have no problem tabling it, but, you know, when it comes up, I will be voting against it.
Thank you, counselor. The will of the council? Okay, we'll table this motion. Madam Clerk, if we could table this? We're going to table this until you can get some answers, if you could discuss with the counselor. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Calendar item number 13. Petition submitted by National Grid to install approximately 10 feet of 2- to 4-inch conduit from existing pole 2274-0 to private property to provide a permanent overhead-to-underground siphon service at 130 Hitchbourne Street.
Petitioner?
Yes. So National Grid was petitioning to install about two 4-inch conduits for the, for secondary service to 130 Hitchbourne Street. I would also like to know that there was a meeting that National Grid had with the DPW director, where they were saying, where they informed me that National Grid would like to withdraw the grant of location for this work request, and they would like to have the customer who's doing the trenching to apply for an open road permit, and the city will inform them for the sidewalk restoration as they previously found it. We will be able to hand them power at the pole, and then they would go underground, because they're willing to go underground.
Thank you. Counselor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bad guy again. In general, there's a brand-new building there, and it's a group home. I don't have a problem with them feeding underground, and it was only the width of a sidewalk that they were breaking up. I would have been okay with, I'm okay with it, but what bothers me is, now, it hasn't been passed here, and they did the work already. That bothers me, that before they got a permit from this city council, they went ahead and did the work. Now, the DPW can authorize a permit, but it still has to be after the city council approves it. So that's the only thing, only problem I have with this, that work was done already, but I would say since it was done, and it still has to be concreted over the sidewalk, because it's only asphalt now. And I would say to approve it tonight and let it happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other councilors? Okay. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 14. Petition submitted by National Grid to install approximately 10 feet of 1- to 3-inch underground conduit from existing pole number 3919 to provide a permanent overhead-to-underground siphon service at 73 Gate Ave.
Petitioner?
This one was a petition from National Grid to install approximately 10 feet of 1- to 3-inch conduit, underground conduit from the existing pole 3919, to provide a permanent overhead-to-underground siphon at 73 Gate Avenue. I was informed by one of my colleagues that the customer has withdrawn their previous request to go of going underground and is contemplating on going overhead instead.
Thank you. Any city councilors? Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the heads-up on that. I'm actually thrilled they'd rather go overhead, reason being, we just had Gate Ave paved. Those poor people had a brand-new paving. Two days later, they, or excuse me, one day later, they had a water main break, so I don't want to inundate the neighborhood by digging up a freshly-paved street again. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed? Oh, you're requesting to withdraw that totally. Okay. Okay. Yep. Withdrawn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Appointment Subcommittee?
Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointment Subcommittee, earlier this evening, the following appointments were recommended to confirm, to be confirmed by the city council. I ask Clerk Melnick if she could read the appointments that will be voted on together tonight.
Madam Clerk?
Jamie Jimenez to the Cultural Council, Deborah Di Filippo West to the Cultural Council, Diana Cardona to the Public Art Commission, Nina Defradis to the Council on Elder Affairs, Lucretia Doreen to the Council on Elder Affairs, Nancy Monkevich to the Council on Elder Affairs, Kathleen Smith to the Council on Elder Affairs, Anne Marie Druckus to the Council on Elder Affairs, Lois Nacola D'Ambrosio to the Council on Elder Affairs, Eleanor Viera to the Council on Elder Affairs, Denise Rambleberg to the Council on Elder Affairs, Sandy Lozier to the Council on Elder Affairs, Robert Hanlon to the Council on Elder Affairs, and Linda Doherty to the Council on Elder Affairs.
Okay.
And I ask you, Mr. President, if we could vote this out favorably tonight as a group?
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Thank you.
Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item before us was an ordinance further amending food truck locations. We discussed this at length. We made it amended, so I would like to ask that a roll call be taken in favor of the amended ordinance.
Madam Clerk? On a second reading, as amended? On a third and final reading, as amended? Roll call for endorsement and indictment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance further amending food truck locations as amended? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guirino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Herramio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The ordinance is engrossed and ordained as amended.
The second item before us was an ordinance further amending Chapter 2.57 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere relative to Parks and Recreation Commission. I believe we've made one small amendment, and I'd like to ask that the city council look on this favorably.
Thank you, counselor. Ordered on a second reading, as amended? Ordered on a third and final reading, as amended? Roll call for engrossment and indictment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance relative to the Parks and Recreation Commission as amended? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guirino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Herramio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Thank you. The third item before us was an ordinance relative to improving public health and accessibility to healthcare products in the City of Revere public buildings. We looked favorably on this motion, and I'd like to call for a roll call to look favorably.
Thank you, counselor. Ordered on a second reading? Ordered on a third and final reading? Roll call for engrossment and indictment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance improving public health and accessibility to healthcare products? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guirino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Herramio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Communications. Calendar item number 32. Communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund to pay Revere TV's quarterly invoice.
Say again, counselor?
Move the question, please.
Yes. Roll call, madam?
Shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of $93,805.67 to pay Revere TV's quarterly invoice? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guirino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Herramio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 33. Communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Shay Husani to the Human Rights Commission.
Anyone here from the mayor's office? This will be referred to Appointments.
Calendar item number 34. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Lark Logan to the Cultural Council.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 35. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Sheila Johnson to the Human Rights Commission.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 36. Communication from the policy writer and analyst relative to rules and regulations for the veteran property tax work-off abatement program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Exciting news. This will be ordered to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 37. Motion presented by Counselor Herramio that the city council order to a public hearing an ordinance further amending the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to the transparency and accountability of utility companies.
Mr. President?
Counselor Herramio.
If we could add counselors McKenna and Guirino Swaya to this, and then refer this to Legislative Affairs. I got communication from the mayor's office that we got to tinker this a little bit in order for it to be in compliance with state law, and so we're going to work on it a little bit before we take it back up.
Thank you, counselor. If we could add the two councilors and refer to committee? Yes.
Calendar item number 38. Motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor requests the short-term rental office to appear before the city council to provide an update on short-term rentals throughout the city and to discuss the effectiveness of the new software and recent changes to the ordinance.
Counselor Cogliandro?
Speaks for itself.
Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 39. Motion presented by Counselor Argenzio that the mayor requests the superintendent of public works and the city engineer to appear before the city council to discuss and present a list of street and sidewalk construction for this year.
Counselor Argenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's simple. Just have them come up here. We'll see what streets and sidewalks they have proposed, and what the funding mechanisms will be this year. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 40. Motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor and superintendent of public works be requested to contact Mast dot to install traffic lights at the intersection of Mountain Ave and Broadway. Counselor Zambudo is recused from this motion.
Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my third time in three years filing a motion to have some traffic lights installed at that location. Hoping third time's a charm. I think we can all agree that that intersection is terrible at multiple points during the day. Unfortunately, it's not within our jurisdiction to add traffic lights there. At least that's what I've been told, so I'm hoping that we can get some movement on this finally and give that area some traffic assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 41. Motion presented by Counselor Nowosowski that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Revere Karate Academy in recognition of their 45th anniversary of being in business.
Counselor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is self-explanatory, but I want to make sure that the whole council is listed on this, not just me.
Thank you, counselor.
It's a good organization. They've done a lot of good things for kids and adults, and, you know, they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 42. Motion presented by counselors McKenna and Herramio that the mayor requests the director of parking to issue paper visitor passes as opposed to digital visitor passes for seniors over the age of 65 and healthcare workers. Too much of a burden is placed on seniors and healthcare workers when using the digital system, who may need to update their visitor pass information multiple times per day.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to add Angela Guirino Swaya to this motion. You know, actually, I would like to add the whole council to this motion, because it affects everybody. So, but I want to speak on this. Since the parking department went digital, a lot of senior citizens, well, mostly senior citizens, have called me in the last month in frustrations, in frustration, because they don't know how to do this, to get the visitors' passes on computers. When I went to the senior, and I talked to the mayor, and the mayor said, "Well, we'll put it in as a request," and this was a couple of weeks ago. When I went to the senior event last Wednesday, many seniors approached me and said, they had the same frustration. They couldn't do it either. I couldn't do it. It was the same answer I received from everybody. So I called the mayor again, and I said, you know, I had a bunch of people at the senior event call me and come up to me and say, "We can't do this." So he said, "Just put the motion in, and we'll do it." He says, "I'd rather give to them than take it away." So, and a lot of them said the same thing. "We don't have computers. We don't know how to use the computers to do this. We have multiple people come to our houses every single day to take care of us, or we have people, our daughters and sons, to come every single day, and we really don't know how to do this, and we don't know how to do it on the phone." So, I called Zach Babo. He was in agreement. So, if you're 65 and over, you can get a hard copy placket, visitors' placket, probably in May, because they have to tweak now the system. But you'll get, 65 and over seniors will get their hard copy placket. So, hang in there, seniors. Be patient. They're coming. And that's all I have to say. I'll hand it over to any of my colleagues that want to speak.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Guirino Swaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor McKenna, Counselor Herramio, thank you so much for getting this. I've been working with Zach, as well as the mayor, regarding this as well, and you guys got a lot further than I did with it. Many seniors are not comfortable with or do not have the access to smartphones or computers. Expecting them to navigate a digital-only system creates unnecessary hardship on them. Home healthcare aides and visiting nurses often rotate shifts and visit multiple times a day. Constantly updating digital visitor passes is an added burden with their focus, when their focus should be on the patient care. Digital systems are prone to glitches, internet connectivity problems, and user errors. A paper option serves as a reliable backup for those who face technical difficulties. Ensuring equal access to parking passes regardless of technological ability is a matter of fairness. Providing a paper option ensures no one is left behind. Also allowing paper passes for significant groups will streamline enforcement and reduce complaints from those struggling with the digital system, especially the seniors. And many cities offer both, and I'm glad that Revere has become to come in to join and maintain inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Herramio?
Mr. President, thank you. Yeah, I'm really grateful to work with my colleagues on this. Thank you, Counselor McKenna, for work on this ordinance. And, you know, this is an equity issue. I think, I don't want to get too crazy repeating a lot of what has already been said, but it's so important to think of folks who, you know, when we're providing city services, it's so important to think of folks who don't have all the access to all the things all the time, and adjusting our policymaking to ensure that we are reaching those hard-to-reach folks. So, really appreciate the work of my colleagues on this, and I hope that the council will vote favorably for this hybrid option of parking.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a really nice motion. I also heard from a number of seniors the last few weeks regarding the digital parking pass, but, you know, sometimes with technology, certain people get left in the dust almost, and I think this is a nice motion that shows that we're willing to stick up for the seniors, and that this will be very helpful for them going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Ira Nowosowski?
Thank you for the full name, Mr. President. I didn't realize my first name was Ira. Thank you. This is an excellent motion. I've been thinking about this for, again, several weeks, as everybody else. The only clarification I want to make is healthcare workers, other than private ones, that people may hire someone, you know, have someone come in and take care of them. Nurses, registered nurses, LPNs, home care people that work for private companies are eligible to get their own visitor pass, healthcare worker pass, that they keep, and as far as I know, that's still paper, that they would get and they can use anywhere in the city. So, you know, those folks are okay, but it's mostly for the people like, if you have a friend of yours that takes care of you, they would need one. But in general, I've gotten hundreds and hundreds of calls of people complaining. I had one person in my own house try it yesterday, and had trouble doing it, a senior. And, you know, it's difficult for everybody, and I think it's this thing we have to make easier for as many people as we can. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is an excellent motion here. I'd like to see it expanded out, though, to all visitor passes, because I got numerous calls on this in the last, since we changed over to the new system, and the people want the paper in their hand. the paper in their hands. The director will put the paper in the dashboard. We can read them also, but at least it gives me the option anyways. But it's an excellent motion, and I agree with it.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Okay. This will... All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number forty-three, motion presented by Councilor Cogleandro, that the city council approve an act establishing an elected zoning board of appeals in the city of Revere.
Councilor Cogleandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please bear with me, I have a little bit prepared to say. So I just want to clear up some of the things that I've seen in the last twenty-four hours in regards to this. There's talk that this is going to hurt developers in the city. There's also talk that this motion was put forward to take power away from the mayor. Neither one of those are true. This ZBA has become incredibly powerful, especially over the last few years with all the development we're seeing. We've had the ZBA have a hundred and eight variance requests in front of them since I've been on the council, and that was January twenty-twenty-two. Out of those one hundred and eight, three were withdrawn, ten were denied, and ninety-five were approved. Everything from gazebos to hundreds of units in an apartment building to splitting lots in half to build on a different lot. I want to address a couple of the arguments that I've heard against this, and again, I respect everybody up here. I didn't call any of you begging you to vote for this. I want to be clear on that, that's never been my style to whip a vote. Either you believe in me or what I'm putting forward, or you don't. Either way, I respect you. You're my colleagues. The first argument is that this power should stay with the mayor and the council, and as Mr. Pozziale said earlier, the process is that the mayor can pick whoever they want and appoint them, and then we're confirming them. So there is a two-step process, it's checks and balances, okay? Right now, a lot of the council complains about the variances that the ZBA grants, but when you look at it, we're the ones who put them there. Mayor appoints, council confirms. That means every decision they make, whether we like it or not, is on this council and the administration. We have no room to complain about their actions, because again, we're part of the process to fill those seats. With that said, with the amount of relief we see given over and over and over, it behooves us to remove the power from elected officials and put this into the hands of the people. Let them decide who represents their neighborhoods. Argument two, we shouldn't make these positions elected, we should be changing the zoning. The council, since I've been up here, this council has complained about the 3A, the MBTA, the transit-oriented building, we've complained, we are complaining currently about the current ADU laws, and the previous council shot down inclusionary zoning. All of these are designed to allow more building in the city. Do we really want to change zoning? Is that really what we want to do? And I do agree that, what is it, sixty or seventy percent of the properties in the city are now non-conforming. That's true. That doesn't mean that the way that the entire state is moving is the way that Revere should be moving. Do we really want to decrease the requirements for lot size? Do we want to decrease the requirements for floor area ratio? Do we want to decrease the number of parking spots that are allowed? Do we want to lessen the requirement for setbacks? Think about these things, because these were all the things that were in inclusionary zoning. These are all the things that are going to happen. We're going to be washing each other's windows if all of this stuff goes through. Something alarming I saw, to me, is something I read on Facebook yesterday, and I'm going to read something, and I want anyone in this room right now to tell me if this statement reflects the actual traffic issue that's in this city. I quote, "The only traffic I see is on the beach, from commuters from Marblehead, Swambskit, Lynn, and Saugus on the west side." Anybody in here care to just chime in? Raise a hand if you think that's an accurate presentation.
Councilor, just come on.
Sorry, Mr. President, but I don't think it does at all. And would you be alarmed to know that a sitting member of the zoning board of appeals is the one that posted this? I rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Guarino Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Cogleandro, although I have the utmost respect for you and what you're trying to do, I oppose the proposal to establish an elected zoning board of appeals in the city of Revere for several key reasons. First, the position currently only pays a thousand dollars a year. Making it highly impractical for individuals to run a campaign. An endeavor that requires time, effort, and fundraising, all for a position with minimal compensation. This could deter qualified candidates from running or lead to unnecessary election costs. Additionally, transitioning to an elected board could create expectations for at least a part-time salary, imposing a financial burden on the city at a time when we are focused on funding a critical project such as the new high school. Lastly, this change would strip the mayor of the authority to appoint individuals he deems best suited for the role. Therefore disrupting the balance of governance and potentially politicizing a position that should be based on expertise rather than electoral popularity. For these reasons, I strongly believe that keeping the zoning board of appeals as an appointed body is the best interest for the city and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start off by saying I applaud Councilor Cogleandro for this motion. I couldn't agree with it more. As a matter of fact, I reached out to our city solicitor in August with these questions to see how we could get this done, and I was told that it needed to be done by home rule petition. After thinking that through, I was on the fence as to whether or not to move forward with the home rule petition, or in the alternative, maybe just curb some of the authority that the zoning board of appeals has, so taking away some of their authority. At this point, I'm not sure which way the best... I like going to elected officials. If that should somehow fail, we should at least, I think, look at taking away some of their authority. Maybe their authority to issue parking variances, for instance. Or maybe the best thing to do is even if they, this does go forward and is approved and they become elected officials, we still decide to take away some of their authority and bring it to the council, under the council's discretion and jurisdiction. And just one note, for a comment that I just heard, I think it's actually, it's kind of a good point that they don't have salary, and that is impractical for them to run a campaign, but in the scheme of things, speaking personally, that it cost me almost thirty thousand dollars to run my campaign as a first-time candidate, our salary is, it makes it, it's impractical for us to even run a campaign. So maybe we could do something with that as well, I'm not sure. But in any event, yes, something absolutely needs to be done. There are too many variances granted. We're going along with everything like Councilor Cogleandro said, and I did want to inform the council, and this is a perfect time for me to do it, that I did receive an opinion for, from city solicitor Capizzi stating that the home rule petition that I requested for accessory dwelling units cannot move forward. So, you know, we just seem to be accepting everything in terms of housing that the state is mandating on us, and again, these are unfunded mandates, and I think that this is definitely a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Councilor Cogleandro.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. And just for the edification of the public, a home rule petition requires a supermajority of the council, which is eight out of eleven votes, to move forward. It then requires the mayor to approve it. If those two things happen, it will then go to the state house, to the House of Reps, they have to approve it. Then it has to go to the senate, they have to approve it. Then it has to go to the governor, and she has to approve it. So there's a lot of steps, and whether it gets approved here or denied somewhere, I don't know. I do want to just respond to my colleague who I also respect immensely. I ran my first campaign out of pocket. I got donations from my family. I didn't have developers, I didn't have lawyers, nobody knew who I was, and I believe that these people should go through those growing pains just like we did. We were nobody, all of us were nobody at some point. The other thing is that if we're going to talk about deterring qualified candidates lead to unnecessary election costs, the elections are going to align with the same municipal elections that we have. Two-year terms, it was in the home rule petition that I crafted with the, or the clerk helped me with, rather. Also, yes, it's taking the power away from the mayor, but it's also taking the power away from us. And I think that argument would be more valid if the council was not involved and the city councillor wasn't making this motion. I don't think it's disturbing governing, and if we're going to talk about expertise over popularity, maybe we should consider the council being appointed positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to say that I respect both sides of this argument. I think that everybody presents a reason for and a reason against, and I'm going to decide how I'm going to vote when it gets to me tonight, but I do respect the maker of the motion immensely, and I respect the opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. I agree with Councilor Zambudo on agreeing with both sides, although I do, I do take a little bit of concern, again, as has been stated, asking someone to get into a race. We've seen last year an anomaly, but the year before, I think we had six city councillors run for city council. If we go through the costs of this, and we don't end up with candidates, and we end up back appointing people, again, the cost of it. Is someone going to be able to run a campaign off of the sixteen-hundred-dollar stipend? At what point do then they come and they petition us to raise their expenses, raise the cost? These are all things I think that we need to take into when we're thinking of things like this. Costs to bring it to the state, costs for attorneys. I know we're in an election year, all eyes are on us right now, and we like answering the calls, but at some times, we really have to do, think of the consequence of bringing someone to court, suing the government, going into courts, and I think for that, and other reasons, the mayors spend, in their own elections, they spend a lot of money, it takes a lot of time, it's a lot of effort for them, and one of those bonuses that come with running an election, winning as the mayor, is you get to pick your boards in your seats. Taking those responsibilities away, I think waters down the government, and for that reason, I'm against it, Councilor, but I think at the will of the council, would you like a roll call? Would you like it?
This is going, by rule, needs to go to Legislative Affairs unless you guys want to play with procedure tonight.
Nope. We will refer this to Legislative Affairs.
Council President, there's one late motion, presented by Councilor Zambudo, that the city council approve the attached resolution in recognition of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of Chelsea Creek, March twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth of seventeen-seventy-five.
Councilor Zambudo.
Can we have the clerk read the resolution, please?
Madam Clerk.
Resolution in recognition of the Battle of Chelsea Creek. Whereas the Battle of Chelsea Creek fought on March twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of seventeen-seventy-five marks a significant, yet often forgotten, chapter in the history of the American Revolution and the history of our nation's struggle for independence. And whereas the battle was first planned, was the first planned offensive military action of the Revolutionary War, the first naval engagement between colonial militias and the British, the first capture of a British war vessel, and the first use of artillery by the colonial forces against the British redcoats. And whereas this battle fought in the marshlands and mud flats of Chelsea Creek near Slade's Mill, also saw the tenacious collaboration of militia forces from the New England colonies, which exemplified the unity and determination that would characterize the revolutionary cause. And whereas despite the minimal losses on the colonial side, the British redcoats suffered significant casualties, losing sixty-four of their elite troops. And whereas the Battle of Chelsea Creek demonstrated the early resolve and courage of the American colonists and foreshadowed the continuing struggles that would lead to the ultimate success of the Revolutionary War, culminating in the Declaration of Independence and the founding of our nation. And whereas this event is an important but often overlooked part of our local history, and it is crucial to recognize the role that local residents and militia forces played in shaping the course of our nation's fight for freedom. And whereas the battle stands as a testament to the bravery and resilience of the colonial militias and serves as a remainder of the sacrifices made by those who fought for liberty and independence from Great Britain. And whereas in addition to the Battle of Chelsea Creek, many significant events led to our nation's independence took place in the surrounding areas, including the heroic actions of the men from Revere, led by Reverend Phillips-Pason and their engagement with British redcoats at Monotony, which further solidified the commitment of our ancestors to securing the freedoms we enjoy today. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Revere formally recognizes and honors the historical significance of the Battle of Chelsea Creek as a pivotal moment in the American Revolution, and be it further resolved that we encourage the citizens of our communities to reflect upon this important event and to remember the bravery and sacrifice of those who fought for the independence and freedoms that we hold dear today. And finally, be it resolved that this revolution, I'm sorry, resolution serves as a reminder to all of us that we commemorate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the American Revolution, we must continue to learn from our history, embracing both its successes and its failings in order to ensure a better and more future, I'm sorry, better and more just future for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Without being derogatory, we're having trouble teaching our kids to read today, and hopefully we're going to turn that around, but we certainly don't teach American history the way when I went to school many, many years ago, they did. And this is where it all started, right here. And, you know, we're so fortunate to serve in the Revere City Council, you know, look at the paintings. I mean, this is our history of our country right here, and it's, it almost gives me goosebumps to talk about that the Battle of Chelsea Creek was here, and it's just, it's, I wish we could teach our kids the history, that a lot of it comes from right here. And so that's the meaning of this, and I'm just happy to present it forward as an educational piece, especially to our youth. Thank you.
Excellent motion, Councilor. Councilor Novoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I congratulate Councilor Zambudo for putting this up. We have one gentleman that we appointed as the city historian, Jeff Pearlman, and this is one of Jeff's babies. He, on a regular basis, sometimes twice a year during the summer, he actually gives a tour and a session of the Battle of Chelsea Creek over by the skating rink, because that's where the Bean Park occurred. And he is going to love seeing this. He has professed to the mayor that he wants to do things about this and help move things along, and he's already trying to teach the kids, but there's not a lot of kids, and believe it or not, adults, that don't know about this. And it's important that we emphasize it here and move it along, and hopefully everybody will understand and see what our country went through. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Haremeo.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to Councilor Zambudo and to the audience. This is such a great motion, of course, as we commemorate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of our independence. For those of you, I'm a little of a theater fan, and there's a musical out there called Alexander Hamilton, and actually, they're coming to Boston in October. I welcome you all to join me. I'll be there to watch it my second time. They also have this soundtrack that I listen to almost every day, and of course, this motion reminds me... motion reminds me of that and the struggles of all peoples to achieve freedom, and when the counselor mentions how folks are having a hard time reading in this country, just reminds me how lucky we have it here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in the city of Riviere, whereas our education system, if segregated from the United States, would rank as the fourth-best education system in the world. Of course, we have some great universities and learning institutions here in the Commonwealth. So, I really appreciate this resolution. Of course, the Battle of Chelsea Creek, as someone who spends a lot of time on his, during his day job, speaking with folks from all over the Commonwealth, from here to Pittsfield, Lawrence, to Fall River, I like to remind folks that this was one of the first, if not the first, naval battles of the American Revolution. And when I travel for work around the country, I like to remind folks, they say, "What's Riviere?" I said, "Well, we got a lot of firsts." Of course, we got the first public beach in the country, but we also have the first naval battle of the American Revolution, right before the American Revolution. So this should be a point of great pride for us here, as we continue to find ways to embody the spirit of the American Revolution. That's freedom of freedom, liberty for all. So, thank you, Counselor Zambudo, and I hope this gets adopted.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you're going to go, Counselor, if you're going to go to Hamilton, I think you should pay for my way.
Sure.
Thank you, because I've never seen it before. I would like to make an amendment on this motion to, if we could look, if the city of Riviere could look at some sort of way we could present a plaque. We don't have a plaque that shows, excuse me?
Is that America?
Amer... Oh, there is? Well, it should be, shouldn't it be down near Chelsea Creek?
It would be welcome.
Okay. So, there is, but there is a plaque. Well, maybe we should move the plaque so people will know.
Do a reenactment in the Pines Yacht Club?
Anyways, all right, so there is a plaque there, so maybe we could have the plaque moved to near the skating rink?
Put another one.
I'll put another one, okay. So, I'm making an amendment so we can...
Well, I don't think it's an amendment to the resolution, though. It's just a...
Yeah, it'd be a new motion.
A new motion, okay. To put a plaque down near the Chelsea Creek.
Motion to...
Give it, I guess Jeff Pearlman has a poem about it, and maybe we could put his poem on the plaque and put it near the Chelsea Creek where the skating rink is, so people could see it.
We'll have to get permission from TCR.
Oh.
We've got another... Thank you.
Motion, accept the resolution.
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered. And on Counselor McKenna's motion...
Mr. President?
Counselor Nowosowski.
Let me say that I've been in touch with Jeff Pearlman, he's been in touch with the mayor, and the location for a plaque for Chelsea Creek is targeted for Seals Creek Building, to put in the inquiring with the owner of the building to put this poem in the shape of a plaque on the building itself, so we won't need permission from TCR.
Oh, that's good.
You sure it won't be a plaque in the shape of a poem?
Slade's Mill, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk? Okay, on Counselor McKenna's motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Mr. President?
Actually, before we close further business, Counselor Garino Swaya has a point of personal privilege.
I just want to say hello to a seven-year-old boy who is sitting here tonight watching the council meeting. You are so brave, and we all love you. Paul Baglio.
All right, Paul.
Mr. President, just a little addition to that. I think we want to congratulate Counselor Swaya.
Yes.
Great job, Counselor.
She did such a great job Saturday night.
Yes, she did.
Friday night? Friday night, sorry. I lose track of days at my age.
Yes.
And they had such a great, great night, and I have no clue how much they raised, but it was a ton of money for this kid, and they treated him so great with a police escort, fire department escort from almost every police department in the region, and it was a great, great showing, and I was glad to have been there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Paul, you have a great night, and everyone else will see you April 7th, 2025, at the next council meeting. Thank you, and good night.